Welcome, everybody. Is anybody here that is here for the specific purpose of bringing in that invocation? No? Well, if you're so inclined, please bow your heads and pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of coming to you in prayer. We thank you for the guidance that you provide us. We pray that our minds would be open to that guidance. We pray that you will bless this meeting, help us to focus on what is best for the city and the residents here. In your most holy name, we pray. Amen. Kevin, that thermostat was shut off when I got here.
It seemed a little cold there.
Yeah. It's only been on for about 15 minutes.
I think we were running air two weeks ago and now...
It's a little cold.
We went to a dentist where we live in Vegas who kept his office so cold that they offered heated blankets to be... So he wouldn't freeze up. I said, "Why don't you just turn the heat on?" He said, "No, it's... There's been a study and it shows if you keep the temperature cool, it keeps the germ muddled up." So they keep it freezing cold and give you a heated one. Well, here we are at 7:00, and we'll call the meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take the roll call, please?
Yes. Here. Here. Larry, here.
Here.
McConnell.
Here.
Chandler.
Here.
Back corner.
Here.
McGinn. Here. Jacob Puffer.
Here.
We're looking for approval of the agenda, and we have a resolution that was provided by Justin at the last minute today, so we have a little reference to that in the motion for whoever's interested in doing that.
I move that the agenda be adopted as a printer with the exception of adding the resolution lifting the moratorium on ZIO Amendment Section 3.30.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now looking for the reading and approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the October 19th, 2023 regular meeting. Sure.
Motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I don't believe we have any preapproved reports or presentations. Correct me if I'm wrong. So we'll move into public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Okay. Moving then into communications. Shirley, do you have anything for us?
Yes. So I handed out a training seminar from the Michigan Municipal Lead Flyer. So if you guys are interested in that, I guess we can deal with that if anyone's interested in receiving these classes. You have a possible tree sale order form, and then we can talk about this later. I emailed you guys the SCOLA... Is this useful to you? Do you guys want to see this? It's the calendar for like when the senior citizen centers have their luncheons or their events or anything like that.
Personal, I don't look at it.
Does anybody look at it?
I looked at it.
Does anybody? If not, then I...
I remember we've got a link from our website to their...
We do. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to do a sky. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's it?
I do have just a couple of reports. One is in regard to our vacant land parcel at 12510 South M52 that we have had on the market for sale for two years. We now have clear title. Justin had some issues in getting that through to the court, but finally I got notice of that from the court that title's clear. So I did notify the one and only person who's a neighbor to the parcel that we now have clear title. He's going to follow through with the inspection that is required by the county because that does not have city well-inseptic. It has private well-inseptic on the property, so an inspection has to be done. So he's going to talk with them and see what needs to be done for his use, and once he has accomplished that, he'll let me know, and then we'll put together the closing. The other thing I just wanted to bring up was that I did get a couple of calls Monday in regard to the car accident on Bath Road and expressing concern about safety there and so on. I talked with Kyle about the various recommendations that the two residents that called me made, and one was they're asking if we would consider sidewalks to be installed along Bath Road. Kyle and I talked about that and thought that might be something at least worth looking at. Certainly, it's the only way to keep people from walking in the road is to provide a sidewalk. So with your permission, I would like to put this on the agenda next meeting for discussion of possibly installing sidewalks. And Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a county road, so it has to have county involvement in order to do that, correct?
I believe that's the case, yes.
Okay. The other suggestions, two suggestions that these people had was to reduce the speed limit. I talked with Kyle about that, too. They do patrol that road just like the other roads in the city, and there are not many speeders, at least not frequent speeders. I did ask them both when they see people speeding or behaving recklessly and driving down the road to call 911, not me. And so they said they would. But the other thing one lady suggested was a deer crossing sign, which had nothing to do with this accident. She just thinks it would be prudent. So again, that's just something for us to consider. So we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. And those are the two reports that I have. Department head reports. Kyle, would you like to go first?
Sure. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In regards to the accident, I just want to give a big thanks to the Sheriff's Department for coming out. Had three or two deputies and a sergeant come out just to lend a hand if needed. We did have Bath Road shut down completely, both directions, for quite a while, so big, big thanks to them. Deputy Abbey came on, did some measurements for us, best we could, since we didn't have any markings on the pavement really. So he helped with that, and then Deputy Stechsheltie came on and helped with the handle that was struck, too. So they're very helpful and very giving of their time, so I greatly appreciate that. Since I've seen you folks last, the peri-emergency response team met once again and got everybody together and did a little bit of debrief for the tornado incident or event in August, but also talked about the future and what we want to accomplish and what we're trying to move forward with. And with our new fire chief, we're going to be doing a tabletop exercise that he and I are going to work on, so that we'll create an event on paper, and then we'll each discipline will work it through, and we'll see where we're lacking or where we need to work on some things as a group. I've met with the school safety team, and they have been working on a project that includes some mapping, not only for their floor plans, but the surrounding areas around each of the schools. And they have printed some of those off, so they've printed extra for the city so that we can utilize those in a crisis incident, anytime we need to lay something down on the hood of a car and mark it up. So grateful for that. And also, talking about the school, we're working on the cameras at Jubilee Park. Couple of them were down the night that it was vandalized, and so Zach is diligently working on that so that we can make sure that we can see what's going on out there. And that's all I have. You folks have anything for me?
Anybody questions?
When was Jubilee?
Last weekend.
Last weekend.
Best that we can tell, yeah. It all seemed to come to light Sunday, so we're assuming it happened Saturday evening.
It was mostly artwork. It wasn't like a destruction...
Is that what you call that?
Well...
Graffiti?
The only way I know how to say that.
Yes. It was graffiti.
Yes. That was graffiti. Yes.
Yeah.
That's not good, but it's better than ripping doors off.
Correct. Yes, which has happened out there before, so. All right. Thank you.
Shirley, do you have a report for us?
Um, no, I don't have to wait.
Okay. Kevin?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
So still working on a way to eliminate our huge brush pile. Apparently, having a big brush pile is an invitation to everybody to come and dump more brush. Trailer load after trailer load come through, which saves us chipping time, but at some point, we're going to have to just see if we can't take anymore. I thought I had a deal worked out with the road commission to haul it and have them eliminate it with the brush that they already have on hand. They took it to their board on Tuesday night, and they said that it's not their problem, it's ours. So they were unable to help us with having it hauled in and eliminating it, I think, to burn it. So I was starting to get estimates for trucking because I was pretty sure it was going to happen, but they didn't want to take that on, so... And I don't necessarily blame them because we do have a lot. So best option that I can come up with, Midwest Tree Service did a lot of the debris cleanup for us during the event, and they've agreed to come in and work for two days, get as much done in two days as they can do for $15,000. That's grinding and hauling. They're going to haul it off-site. That's the lowest price I could come up with with talking with other vendors, and we couldn't rent the equipment to do it for that price. I didn't bring this as an agenda item. I didn't have the numbers in yet again yesterday. So if I need to bring it back, I will, but it's my recommendation that we should probably do this before winter to eliminate the majority of the bulk of the brush. It wouldn't get rid of the logs or the stumps or all the other stuff, but it would put a big dent in what we have. And then maybe we can get it down to an amount that we could just run the rest through our chipper or run a big chipper and just grind it up and be done with it. That's all I have on the brush for now. We replaced most of the damaged sidewalks. We worked on that a couple of weeks ago. We prepped everything, poured, had truckloads brought in, poured the new sidewalks. I don't have the final numbers on that yet, but we were going to break that up between local and major street maintenance, and then we can also use those numbers to put in our Department of Transportation report for non-motorized transportation maintenance. So that'll help us out with that. We had another pipe leak at the water treatment plant, not an emergency like we had before. There was a flange that was dripping, and we thought it was a valve, so we took it apart. We got a new valve, replaced it, and when we put it back together, the leak got worse. So upon further investigation, we had to remove a section of pipe, make a new section of pipe, bolt it in place, and when we took the old pipe out, the flange was split and was cracking, and it was getting ready to blow. I had to recruit some help to get that replaced. We called TH Iford and Matt to come give us a hand with that. He's got the knowledge and the know-how to get it done right the first time, and we tried to do the best we can, and they were able to help us. So it'd probably be an overtime bill for that, an emergency call for that. The sewer lagoons, we did a runoff of over 13 million gallons from the sewer lagoons. That's the first of two that we do in the fall. Today, I took my lagoon L2 license exam, which was talked about when I was hired in. I had to have user experience before I could take the test, so I'm hoping for a positive result there. If not, I can take it again in the spring, but I'm hoping that that's not going to happen. Back in May, I had an incident with a resident. I reported to council that I had the incident and that I was pursuing legal action against the resident. I was subpoenaed to go to court, which was also scheduled for today, which would have conflicted with my lagoon license test. But the resident, he pled responsible and paid a fine, so the issue is resolved. So hopefully, I don't have to deal with that anymore. Kyle is part of a program which allows us to put our name in the hat for equipment and stuff that the city can utilize, military surplus items. Last year, right after I started, we went over and picked up a generator, a trailer-mounted generator, 20 KV.
30?
Since we... 30?
I believe it's 30.
Okay.
Yep, that makes sense, sorry.
It does. It's very similar to the one that the county brought in and put at the fire hall during the emergency event, but ours is not set up to run anything but military equipment right now. So I had Motor City Howard take a look at it and see what it would cost and get it usable and put a panel on it and plug leads so that in an emergency event, we can utilize it for emergency lighting or even run bigger equipment with it. So we got the generator for free. It runs and operates good. We're unable to utilize it. It just sits at the DPW facility, and he estimated about $8,000 for the work to be completed on that to make it usable. Now, that's unbudgeted. I wasn't sure what to do with it up until this point. If the council is interested, I can get three quotes, and we can go with the cheapest quote, put it on the agenda, get it worked down so that we can utilize it and have another generator for us to access so that it's not just sitting there, not doing us any good.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Would you like, Kevin, to get three quotes on the generator to convert it for our use?
I think we should. Hopefully, we don't have another immediate need like we had, but we should see what it takes to make it ready.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
We had a sewer backup on a home on Green Street. We did find some blockage in the sewer main when we investigated and we gened the line. We had checked it the Thursday before the backup happened, and the lines were clear. They called, I believe it was Tuesday, and it had backed up between Thursday and Tuesday, and so we cleared it. They had some backed up into their basement that needed to be cleaned, taken care of. The company that they hired to clean it contacted me, and I recommended that they give us a price quote for the work. If it wasn't a large amount, that we might be able to just settle it and be done with it. It was quite expensive for the work that they did, so I'm recommending that we put that through their insurance company and then our insurance company so that the responsible parties take care of their part of it. So we're still, it's still in the works. I just wanted to let counsel be aware. This is the first one I've had since I've been here, and it's the second one that we've had since John's been here, so... Or since he was superintendent. So they're not very frequent. They do happen. Anytime we have a sewer collection system, things go funky sometimes, and it wasn't due to any neglect or lack of maintenance, it's just one of those things that happen. So I'll keep you all informed on where we're at with all that, so. Is there any questions or comments for me?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If you were going to haul the brush to the county for them to burn it, why can't we just burn it here? We have a greater permit that could come in and watch it.
I... We did some minor sidewalk grinding in the past few weeks just to do some maintenance, and it created minor dust. We were spraying water on it, but some dust made it into the air, and someone called the Department of Air Quality at Eagle and reported us for air quality complaints. I know if we attempted to burn anything that created any kind of smoke or blew in a direction that somebody didn't like, they would probably come and find us. I'm not willing to do that, and I don't think it's in the city's best interest to do that because the residents aren't going to put up with it.
Well, I think it kind of speaks to a double standard, too, because we don't allow people to burn.
Exactly.
So we can't not allow them to burn and then us burn.
This is an emergency situation, and I'm sure counsel would, you know, take that into consideration if we don't come up with another option or we can't spend that money, $15,000, to do it. I would request that we look at those options.
Well, let's see what the quotes are, and once you get those, let Shirley know you have them so it can go on the agenda. Okay? If it's for the next meeting, great, but if you don't have them by then, just let her know when you have them so we can put them on there.
The $15,000 is the cheapest that I could get. I mean, that's it.
Oh, okay, so you're not going to get it.
That's the final number.
You're not going to get any more.
I had some for $30,000 in previous meetings, so this is by far the cheapest option. Yeah, the $30,000 one, the company was going to come in, they were going to eliminate everything, they were going to take the brush, they were going to grind the logs, they were going to chip or they were going to split and grind the stumps. They were going to haul it all out of here, they were going to completely eliminate it. So then I asked them to come back with a number if we didn't do 100% of it, you know, if we eliminated some of the more costly items, what would it cost? And they come back with $23,000. I told, I was talking to Jimmy from Midwest, trying to get a price from him, telling him what I was looking for, and he gave me his best price. He said, "I'll come in," he said, "you're going to be real happy with what I can get done in two days."
Have you gotten to do that?
Yeah. And he's like, "I won't do this for anybody," he says, "but I understand the need that your community is in," and he really wants to help us out. And so, yes, I've cut the cost in half. I was really hoping to truck it to the county because trucking charges would be a lot less than running the equipment for the grinding, but this is...
What percent, I'm sorry, Kevin, what percentage does he think that in two days that you guys think will get through?
If we just focus on the brush, not the logs or stumps, he's thinking he'll get most of it gone. There might just be a little bit left.
If for the most part, the brush piles would be gone?
Yes, the bulk of it would be gone, and the logs are pretty easy to get rid of. We can have people haul them out, people take them for firewood. I'll use some for firewood, that kind of stuff. No one wants to deal with the brush, and we can't chip it all. It's all tangled together, and it's a mess because we just, it was get it off the roads, get it out of the way, dump it. So, and like I said, people have been adding to it since the event, people have cut down more trees. We get probably four or five loads a day coming in, and we're just bursting at the seams with brush down there.
They'll haul this chipped product away with included in that, then whatever they chip in two days will be gone?
Yeah, they're going to, that's including trucking. They'll take it, they turn it into mulch, and then they sell bulk mulch to landscaping companies. So they're a supplier for that.
Well, counsel, because that was not on the agenda and it's spending money, typically we would have to put it on the agenda to make a resolution to spend the money. This, though, is part of the emergency that we've been spending money left and right regarding.
I do have a question, if you'd like to see it.
So I think I'm comfortable, and it's up to you guys, dear counsel. If somebody wants to make a motion tonight to do this, we could then follow up tomorrow with Justin and just say, "We did this. Are we good?" If he says no, then we'll have to hold off and follow protocol. But if he said, "Yeah, this is part of that emergency, go ahead and do it," then we could. So it's up to you.
I don't want to create a relationship where I just bring you guys stuff and drop it in your lap and say, "Let's do this."
Well, we don't have tornadoes often, so I don't think that would...
Right. So this is a little outside of the norm, and I apologize for that, but this is up to the minute. Like, I just got this information, so I'm bringing it in, so. So just to be clear, when this is just down the stumps and, you know, logs, would it be okay? Like, I know when we had talked, the brush was a safety hazard, but if it was stumps and logs, would you welcome the public to take the logs, you know, to take some of the cops burden off the plate? If somebody has like a dump trailer or a big trailer where they can, we can load them, they can stay in their vehicle nice and safe. It's no different than what we do with our wood chips and that. We'll do $2 a load, so if a log is one scoop, then we'll do $2 for one log, and we'll carefully place it on their trailer. They can stay safe in their vehicle, they're not wandering around or using saws on city property or doing anything like that. I will clear this with the attorney because I haven't talked to him about this yet, but we already have set precedence with doing the services that we provide already in that manner. So I didn't, we've done it one time so far, and I didn't feel like that that was going to be, the danger factor just wasn't there if we do it that way. Beyond that, I don't want to open up the gate, say, "Whoever wants to come, come with us this weekend, have at it." I think that we need to do it controlled, and we need to keep people's safety in mind and do it safely, for sure. But that's the best option I can come up with to eliminate this stuff and not pay a whole bunch of money to do so.
Well, I think it's a much better number. I mean, we've gone from 30 to 28 to 23 to 15, so maybe we should wait till the next meeting and see if we can get this loaded.
I think this is, this is pretty much it.
You think that's going to be the...
Yeah, I think that's going to be it.
Hand that back to Larry.
It's $7,500 a day. Would he be willing to see we can do it one day, and then we can, you can look at it and say, "Do another day," or does he have to have two days?
I can present that to him. I think once you mobilize and haul the equipment, I mean, you're going to spend the first three, four hours setting up, and I don't think that's where you get a lot of production. And then if you are trucking out in the same day, you'd have to have another two, three hours to load everything upstairs.
Load up, right.
So you'd only have a small window of time. This way, you're getting on-site, you're setting up, you're all ready to go basically for the next morning, and then you knock it out.
Every day you're getting shorter.
Yes.
Any further discussion regarding this subject? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we approve... I move that we approve Midwest pre-service to work on brush chipping and removal as a result of the tornado event with the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for two days' worth of service. And allow the superintendent of Public Works, Kevin Tyler, to approve that activity.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Kelly.
I just want to say thanks for the sidewalks. You know, I live on Washington Street, and I thought it was really cool that you guys kind of stepped up and did that. So it was a special thanks for that.
Committee reports? Do we have any committee reports for tonight?
I would like to update everybody on Sesa.
Okay.
We had a special meeting on Monday, joint meeting of Perry Township. Our financial woes came caught up really quick. And we all knew it was going to be tight, but it came faster than we anticipated. So we basically, Sesa sold some equipment to Perry Township. And then immediately, on the same resolution, leased it back. So we get an influx of cash to get us through. And then when the new assessments go through, we will, should be sitting okay. So that was a tense moment. Did ask questions about, you know, they can't sell it out from under us. So then sell the lease to somebody, all those things. So there is outs for us. We have some protection as Sesa and of course Perry, since City of Perry is a founder and incorporated, I think they call it so.
So that gets us on an even financial base for now?
It's more than we needed to get through to the first of the year. Because we tried to get a line of credit to the banks and no. But we are looking at selling the tower apparatus. And then that will decide if we sell it, how much we get, all those things. If we buy one of our pieces of equipment back or if we use that for a little bit bigger issue.
Any questions for Bob from council? Thank you, Bob, for that. Jacob, would you just give us a little report on the treats on Main Street event that happened on Sesa?
Yeah, kind of had a report on that, actually. I think the turnout was really good. I would estimate with my gut that it was probably about twelve hundred people. So it's a pretty, pretty good outcome. Couple honorable mentions for donors. We had three companies in the area that donated a good chunk to kind of support the project, if you will. Amy's Diner, Downtown Diner, obviously led this. But Reynolds Field Clearing and Lot Maintenance was an honorable donor. Spartan Fence in our industrial park was another one, and then Truck Stop. So those three donors alone covered about half the cost for the event. There was some honorable mention, Hazlet Vet Clinic, Watkins Funeral Home, and other good chunks that helped make the event possible. And I think it was good for the community to get together and the businesses to, you know, kind of come together on something like that. And happy to see it continue.
That's great. Thank you for being involved in that. And thank you to the businesses who put that together. And it's great to see successful events put together by the businesses. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Can you think, Chad?
I think this committee has a number of items later on the agenda.
Yes, you do.
I'll be back for that.
All right. Moving on then to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and the panel be authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving into old business items, we have a couple of things there. One is in regard to the antique truck. And the auction company in Durand, they were contacted and asked to, with eyes on the truck instead of just a picture or hearsay, give us an appraisal. And they relayed that information back saying that it has a lot of paint chips, which I would expect it to have after having the building dropped on it. But he said it's still, it just needs to be cleaned up. Needs a good washing, polishing. But he said it's probably not going to bring more than four thousand dollars. But he would recommend trucking it over to their auction site in Durand. As I mentioned before, we pay two dollars to get it on their site. The buyer pays the fee to the auction company. And they pay any shipping that might be necessary related to the purchase. Once the auction takes place, I think it's eight days. They have eight days to pay and ten days before we'll get our money. So a total of ten days. Their auctions are the third Thursday of each month. And they are affiliated with the company that I don't pronounce correctly. Shirley, say it again.
Miedema.
Miedema, M-E-I-D-I-M-A. They're a large group. They're worldwide. And they, this company, X Y Z, has been doing business through this auction house for four years. So that's just an update on that information. I know other people were looking into it and looking at the truck. I didn't get any feedback from Dave, did you, Larry?
I talked to Dave Klees yesterday, and he was a part of the review that Rob Kittle and others did. And based on Dave's understanding of the truck and the lack of knowledge in that area, because it is really a heavy duty truck, he deferred to Rob's recommendation.
So that's what we have right now. Oh, the other thing. Our insurance on our vehicles, our buildings and so on, our insurance premium is due the first of December. We can delay that premium payment if we need to for a few days. But I also talked to Justin about whether or not we need to keep insurance on that truck until it's sold. And he said, if you're not driving it down the street, you don't need to insure it. So I instructed Shirley to take that off, the insurance that we'll be voting on later tonight, and not insure that. And the key reason is, Shirley spoke with our representative at MML, if we paid the premium for the truck and then sold it December fifteenth, we would not get any prorated money back. It stays with the insurance company. So any discussion regarding all that?
I'm okay with updating that for you.
Okay.
I move that we approve to use X Y Z Auction Service in Duran to handle the sale of the nineteen twenty-nine antique truck. The city's fee will be two dollars to enter into the auction, and there will be no reserve set for the sale.
Second.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Can I ask a question on that?
Absolutely.
Add the new business for next council meeting? Just discuss where that money goes once, once they receive it?
We can discuss that right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have chatted about that a little bit when the department has met. When we first said, why do we have this truck still here when it hasn't been used? We talked about possibly, remind me what the funds called again?
My recommendations were it should go to Motor Pool, the disaster relief, or the general fund.
Justin said we're not obligated to put it anywhere because, you know, put it to a specific site because it was donated to the city. When you purchase something with city money out of a specific fund, then you sell it, then the money has to go back in that fund. But since this was donated to the city.
Motor Pool funds have been used in the past to maintain it. So that was my reputation for, my reasoning for including Motor Pool in that discussion.
Further discussion regarding that? We can make that decision tonight or we can put it on the next agenda after you've given that more thought, whatever you prefer.
Depending on how quickly we're to sell, that's a big if. We do have an anonymous donor for the disaster relief activity.
For the matching.
For the matching fund. So if we elected to put it there, the timing was right. We may be able to have some additional funds matched above and beyond what we get for the truck. Just a thought.
Really?
Good thought.
I think some of the funds should go back to Motor Pool. And we could probably get a good idea if we're, you know, take over some of that match opportunity. I think Kevin's Motor Pool Fund should get some money back since it had been planned to maintain. But that's a great idea. Larry?
Kevin, can you do some looking into that and just see what?
We did find some old receipts from the last time it was tuned up. It wasn't a whole lot. And I'm sure the records are quite old. That one's been done for like eight years or something like that. So yeah, we could dive into it and look through all files and see if we have any archived maintenance records on it.
Okay, if you can do that and then get that information to Shirley, then we'll put it on the next agenda, knowing what that amount is. And after you've had time to give it some thought, then we'll have a vote at that time. Our next old business item is something we've talked about a couple of times now. But it's in regard to the tree replacement or the tree sale. Bob Porter has been working with Megan on this. And Bob, do you have any information you want to share with council?
No, I haven't had a chance to get ahold of my guy. So I have, I have been thinking about this. They want, because consumers doesn't want trees planted under their power lines.
Correct.
But there are some ornamentals. So I was going to look into an ornamental tree that we could add, one or two, add to this list that people, then we would be compliant. When do, when is the?
Megan's here.
That's what I was looking for. When do we want to get it put out?
We want to send it out in taxes. So it's going to go in the newsletter, which is just like, the last week in November, we'll probably get them out. They have to be out by December first. And we usually get them out like a week.
Does council have this?
So what?
This is something that Megan put together just based on the information that we gathered in the last meeting and from Bob and just from our discussion. And this is her thoughts in regard to what would go in with the winter tax bill that goes out the very end of November. The deadline for ordering is.
I will, I will have that posted.
Because they would be for spring planting.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
The only other thing is the shipping. Because you said it was two hundred dollar shipping.
Roughly.
And we didn't know who was going to absorb that. So she did add five dollar shipping. But we're wondering if we should add like five dollars to a tree or we get ten. Yeah.
We add it to the cost because also those, those numbers don't have tax in it.
We wouldn't pay tax.
But we will, we will, we're exempt.
Right, if they were, if they were writing a check to us and we were sending.
Then we buy it, then we're tax exempt. So that's okay. We can do it that way.
Is it five dollars per tree?
No.
Per order?
They'll do a flat rate.
Okay, so like five dollars per order?
It's, well, we ordered one tree.
No, no, I mean the people, the residents.
So it's the load, I will confirm this, but it's roughly two hundred dollars for the load. You know, they bring a box truck. Let's say they can put forty trees on that truck. If they put one or forty, it'll be two hundred bucks.
One or more.
All right, okay.
So that's the thing, we need to let down the shipping and.
I will call first to leave.
And other trees then too.
Okay.
Because springtime, they bring in other trees. Most of the seed grows. These ones are on this list. So we bring in some ornamental type trees and we can.
And then the date, like what you would need to know.
Yeah, and we'll always say approximately, approximately, but.
I'll send it to you, Shirley, because I won't be at the next meeting, next council meeting.
So the key is that this does need to go out with the winter tax bill. So we need to have it all together by the. Any other comments or questions, discussion regarding the tree? Hearing none, we'll move into new business. And let me just back up one minute in regard to the fire, the truck. Could you figure out how we're going to get that truck over to Durand?
We might run a trailer door, borrow a trailer and load it up on that and haul it over to Perry. We'll do it there one way or another.
Joe Audia let the fire department use his.
Flatbed.
What is it?
It's a flatbed.
The flatbed to haul it to Johnson back. So we might just want to check in with him and see if we could.
I'll ask him.
Yeah, Scott Grinnell is the one that drove it because he works there. So maybe you could just check in with Scott?
I mean, you can, I can check in too because I work there part-time with him too.
Oh, that'd be great.
So it doesn't matter to me. If you want to check in, I'll get a little more hold of me. Okay, I can let you know tomorrow.
I'll get you Zach's contact information at X Y Z. And then once you guys have it all cleaned up and ready to roll and he finds out if we can use Joe's flatbed, then if you would make arrangements to get that over there.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I was just waiting for the green light.
The light's green, Kevin. Anything else? This is the new thing, the new business thing? All right, you're just, you're just waiting, chomping at the bit. New business, possible approval of G I S maintenance fees. Kevin?
That's a, it's a G I S.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Sorry. G I S.
So there's an organization called R CAP. And they provide a lot of trainings for free for rural water operators. And they have various funding opportunities for different projects and stuff in the water community. They received a bunch of grant money about two years ago to start a G I S program for rural communities. And the City of Perry was able to capitalize on that. So up until this point, all of the maintenance and work and inputting information and everything that has been completed was funded by that grant money. We completed the G I S data entry and programming before the grant expired. So now we have this program that's completed that we have no means to utilize because there, no one said, hey, you have to start funding this at a certain date or time. We just jumped on board and everything was going fine. And I got an email saying, what do you want to do with all of this information? They either give it to you and you can source somewhere to maintain that or operate it. Or they offer the plan here that they submitted for us to review, which they're, they're non-profit. If you hire some big time G I S company, they're upwards of eight thousand dollars a year. Engineering companies, firms that run these types of things, they're, they can get pretty pricey for the IT maintenance stuff. R CAP will maintain our system for considerably less than that. I didn't get specific prices for other options for this because I didn't feel like we had to based on these low numbers. And the cost. And, and the cost of this is going to be split between water and sewer because there's water maps and sewer maps that we utilize. And this is a mobile application that we can pull up on our phone on a job site. And we can see prints where water shops are, valves, hydrants, sewer manholes, everything we need to do, mist digs. The crew is on this thing constantly. And for us not to keep all this gathered information and data going, I don't think it would, it would be good for us.
This is the same company, Kevin, that came around that did all of the data gathering.
Yes.
Here last year?
Yes. And they, they've been working on it for a couple of years now. And like I said, we, we hit the final input points about a month ago, right before it ran out. And so we have the complete maps. So it'll just be the maintenance cost of basically server space. And then they'll come once a year if we find flaws in the programming or something's missing, or even additions, new businesses or homes that go in. We can have them come out and pinpoint those new locations and, and put them in the map for, for whatever. And then we also have a, the lead service line inventory map. We can go on there and change as we're inspecting homes and make that available to the residents to see on the city website to see if their home has been inspected, if it's been ruled out, you know, where suspect lead lines are, which we haven't found any. It just kind of gets that information out there, which the state says we're going to have to do in 2025. So this is already a big jump on all of that. And it'll, it'll help us utilize that information in a helpful manner.
So I see the contract length is a three-year period. But the, the cost, the total, 74221, is that for the contractor per year?
A quarter. It's a quarterly.
Oh, it's a quarterly?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I see, at the top it says that. And I just read. Thank you.
And that's a fixed cost over that three-year period then?
Yes.
Per year, but there's no, excuse me, no built-in increase or anything year over year?
Unless they have costs that they have to pass along to us, then, then we can review it at that time. But no, this is, like I said, they're nonprofit. They, they do this to help communities out and, and keep rates low. So I don't anticipate them being unforeseen costs. And they've already got their, their crew established and their employees and, and they, there's no overhead, so to speak, for what they're doing. So I would say no, there's not going to be hidden fees.
Is this, I'm sorry?
How many field places workers do you have? This is confusing. There's an additional, the cost of 385 per year and 110 per year for viewer. But then if you look at their breakdown quarterly, it's $96.25 per quarter. I can't do that math in my head. Divided the 385 by four, maybe just that, I don't know. Do you know how many people you have? Is everybody on it or?
Um, I believe we have.
96.25.
Six of us, thank you.
Only thing I saw that maybe I just wanted to confirm is right here it states that, you know, will not substitute for land surveying work necessary for design, engineering, and construction activities. And, you know, I know we're comparing this to design engineering. I don't know enough about your job, so I can just, you know, just from my knowledge, you're using this for piping or sewer. And then if we were doing major construction, we would still obviously have to hire a third party or an engineering firm, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this is more for just day-to-day operations?
Field references. And, and they're as accurate as it can be, but they're, they're within five feet or so. If you're standing in one spot with the application open with the cell phone tower signal, your dot will be moving around. So I mean, they, they just have to put that in there so that no one's saying, well, we built it per the prints you gave us.
Right.
And there's no waterman here to tie into.
Right.
It's just a disclaimer that they're not 100% responsible for the information. They, they did their, their best with the information that was provided to them with our maps, with working with us in the field. But if something's not there, you know, it's not really on them, so.
Kevin, in regard to the cost, is this in the ballpark of what we've paid over the last two years?
Um, I would say so. I, I haven't seen what they've been billing to, for the grant.
Okay.
We weren't part of that, part of the process.
I see, okay.
And I came in at the tail end of this too, so I don't know how everything was set up and how it worked in the beginning. If you need to know information like that, we can talk to RCAP and sit down with them.
No, it's okay, I was just curious. Knowing everything else has gone up so much, I just wondered if that was still in the same.
This would slow you guys down quite a bit if you didn't have it.
At some point, there's some level of responsibility or working towards having a, a system like this for every water and sewer organization in the state of Michigan. It, it's going to be a requirement. So starting over would, would be a mistake, I think. And I'm not saying that we have to be locked into this. They're willing to give us the information. If we find a, a better option, we can take that information, they can plug it in, and the map will start working instantly. They're not claiming any rights to the data or saying that they own it. It's our data and it's our maps and our information. And they're saying you can do with it what you want. They're willing to just hand it over today.
Sure. I move that we approve the maintenance agreement with RCAP in the amount of $742.21 quarterly for a total of $2,968.84 per year for a contract length of three years. We authorize Kevin Tyler, DPW superintendent, to sign the agreement.
Start here.
We have a motion from Mike seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Also, moving forward, this will be something that we budget for, so it won't be a surprise again. We'll, we'll know what the expenses are and have that in our budget too, so. Thank you. Thanks.
Our next item on the agenda is possible approval of the renewal of our MML and that's our liability of property pool insurance. Shirley, do you want to talk about that?
So Kevin, I said, I gave you guys the full packet. I did give you a revised, just the first page, because she did add the blueprint there that tells us that if we renew with, you know, cheap truck on there or any, any item renewed with, you know, anything on there, and we end up removing it after the renewal, March, June, just whatever, November, we don't receive a return on premium back. But the same holds true. If Kyle buys a nice new Dodge Charger for a new cruiser, then they would, they, if he bought that in June, they would not add anything to the premium. So they would not add anything until the next renewal. So that's just what she added in there. So we are going to basically proposing to renew the premium for the $42,905 without the fire truck. This does give a breakdown of everything. It isn't, we, it, it only went up like 18, a little over $1,800 from last year. So we had an increase in payroll, increase in property values just from inflation. Looks like the catastrophic claims assessment per vehicle went up. And I'm assuming that is for everybody who renews with them. And there was just a slight increase for each member in the pool. We will be receiving after we renew a return dividend of $3,564. So that comes every year, remember seeing that come through every end of December maybe, after we pay our first installment. I don't remember if we paid all at one time or if we paid installments. So, so that's, that's just.
The one question that I had, Shirley, you gave the example of the Dodge Charger.
Yeah.
And a premium wouldn't increase mid-year. I see in here that they have reduced, though you muddled it up, the overall property values were reduced by the buildings that we lost. Now, assuming that we get at least some of that done in this upcoming.
Yeah, so I'm, I take that that holds true for buildings that we add to. That won't be added until the next.
Next cycle.
Next cycle, yeah, but they would be insured.
They would be insured at whatever value we had. But we wouldn't have an adjusted premium mid-contract year until the new year.
Right.
Any further discussion, questions, things we need to be aware of? Go ahead and look at this over, I know it's a lot of information.
Did we change or increase our values, assessed values of our buildings and things?
We did not, but I, I kind of think it's a good idea that after we have our new buildings put up, to have everything appraised.
At one time?
Yeah, and then increase everything.
And so it would be on our premium for 2020.
Yeah, and.
Twenty-five, right?
Twenty, twenty-five.
Yes, twenty-five, I'm sorry, yes.
Well, my only concern, I have a good way of other supplement, but the new buildings are, any new buildings we build, we put up will have a value. Those can be, they don't necessarily have to be assessed or, you know, inspected by somebody. But all the other buildings we have, since our, we renew this, our premium won't go up, but I don't know. I, I don't, I don't want to spend any more money if we don't have it, but I think we should be trying to ensure a reasonable, correct amount. Or, you know, we should learn something from what just happened.
Right.
We should insure them, I think, for replacement cost, which is where we fell short in this event. But the, the pavilion, the veterans' pavilion was insured at replacement cost. Our general property, like the poles, the light poles and things like that, those are replacement cost. There were the small buildings that were demolished out there at the DPW. Two of those were replaced at cash value. So when we do rebuild out there, what we're thinking or what we've been hearing and talking about, hearing Kevin talk about, is one building. So once that's put up, we will make sure it's a replacement value. And we'll have that value from its construction.
Right.
So once it's done, then we'll have to talk with Diane, our representative to that MML, and make sure that that is now a replacement value.
Schedule.
Correct. Does that, does that make sense?
Sure. Insurance never makes sense to me, so. Give me your money, I won't give you anything back.
That's it in a nutshell?
Yeah, we could get a piece of paper. Policy. You don't get a lot of rules.
Yeah, I, I haven't ever heard of that either, so I had to make sure that I asked her a couple of times. So I was like, are you sure?
I move that we approve payment for city insurance removal of MML liability in property pool in the amount that would exceed $42,905 and authorize the clerk to sign subject agreement.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And this is in our budget. I mean, we didn't say that out loud, but just to make sure everybody recognizes that. Okay, we're now moving into our ordinance phase here. We have some possible adoptions, and then we also then have some first readings. So I'm going to turn this over to Larry as he is our ordinance committee chairperson. And we can help him read if anybody wants to. They can just raise their hand when it's time.
Okay. First off, we had some first readings at our last meeting, which were the output of the animal and pet ordinance task force that we had in place a while back. So the first one that I want to look at possible approval of would be the definitions that we read last time. Anybody have any questions as it regards the, the definitions, basically, that would change the definition of pets and define indoor, outdoor pets and community cats and community caretaker? And if you remember, we also added T N R and T N V R to our definition list. And so this would in fact be approving that modification. I move that we approve zoning ordinance amendment number 383 definitions, which was read during the October 19th, 2023 council meeting, with an effective date 30 days from publication date.
I hear a second?
Second.
Motion from Larry, second by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Okay, the next one was also a significant update to our zoning ordinance 380, or 3.30, dealing with animals in residential and agricultural districts. And we went through a complete first reading of that at our last meeting, once again with lots of input from the, from the task force. Any comments, questions, or discussions on that? I move that we approve zoning ordinance amendment number 385, section 3.30, animals in residential and agricultural districts, which was read at the October 19th, 2023 council meeting. And the effective date of that would be 30 days after publication date.
Second.
Go ahead.
Kena?
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, second from Kena. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
And just when I say after publication date, just for awareness of the task force people that are here, all of these have to go in a actual circular publication newspaper, and that becomes the date that will, those will be posted as they're approved, probably sometime early next week. And so it'll be 30 days after that point in time.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one that we had a first reading of last time dealt with some modifications to our codified ordinance around animals, once again. They changed just a couple of points in that as it regards dogs specifically. I move that we approve ordinance amendment number 384, section 612.01 and 612.04.3. Dogs, which was read during the October 19th, 2023 council meeting, and likewise will go in to effect 30 days after publication date.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, second from Kena. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Okay, having approved all of those, now we're going to back up to, back in August, when we looked at some earlier proposed revisions, we subsequently as a council approved putting a moratorium on some portions of the ordinance that we had on the books, giving the task force time to develop the proposals that we just approved. And we need to actually have a resolution that will ultimately lift that moratorium. So I move that we accept the following resolution. Whereas the Perry City Council on August 3rd, 2023 previously issued the following moratorium, the city postponed the possible adoption of zoning ordinance amendment section 3.30, animals in residential. amendment section three point three zero, animals in residential and agricultural districts, for one hundred and twenty days, issued a moratorium on enforcement of section three point three zero of the current zoning ordinance as it pertains to dogs and cats, excuse me, for one hundred and twenty days. Note the balance of section three point three zero would remain in effect. And commission a six-member cross-discipline task force to objectively research and develop a proposed update to section three point three zero within the one hundred and twenty-day period that addresses the concerns expressed with section three point three zero of the current zoning ordinance. And whereas the city of Perry has approved amendments to the relevant ordinances affected by this moratorium, it is hereby determined that the city of Perry shall terminate the aforementioned moratorium as the same is mute once approved dates have become effective.
Second.
Was that you, Bob?
Yes.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And I'd like to just say thank you to the members of our task force that were here tonight and attended the meetings and provided such valuable input.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, for putting that together. Thank you so much.
Okay, continuing on with some more ordinance activity, the next one I believe that we have on the agenda now deals with land division. And just a little bit of background, this is a ordinance that we have on the books that in the zoning ordinance, is not used very often. It only is involved with any time that someone wants to have a parcel of land and legally potentially split it into two parcels. We have some documentation on the books right now that does not correctly define what we actually do in practice. So the ordinance committee took on redrafting and making some modifications to that ordinance or proposed modifications to that ordinance, along with developing a process as well as a form or worksheet that will make it more streamlined and clear in terms of what is expected. And basically, we tried to make those, that form and that process mirror largely what is done by the county. We had Eileen Sted, our city assessor's input, well, it's Leland's input on it. Comments, questions before we do a first reading?
Want me to read it for you, give you a break?
That'd be great, Mike, thank you.
I move that the zoning ordinance amendment number three eighty-six, land division, which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains, the city of Perry zoning ordinance, section five point oh four land divisions, is amended as follows. Section five point oh two land divisions. A, no lot, parcel of land or access or private street easement shall be created or modified that is not fully compliant with minimum area width, lot width-to-depth ratio, frontage, access, and other dimensional requirements of this ordinance. All land divisions, lot splits, or property boundary reconfigurations of platted lots, lots and unparcled parcels of land shall comply with all applicable requirements of this ordinance and the Michigan Land Division Act. B, no land division, lot split, creation of access or private street easement, or reconfiguration or change of property boundary line shall occur unless, and until, the city of Perry land division process has been successfully completed. No land division shall be approved until the city of Perry determines that the land division, lot split, access, or private street easement, or boundary reconfiguration, as well as resulting lots, parcels of land, or access, or private street easements, fully complies with the requirements of this ordinance and other applicable city of Perry ordinances. C, fees for a land division application shall be established from time to time by resolution of the city council. No land division shall be approved without a survey prepared by a registered land surveyor showing all lots or parcels of land, easements if any, and legal descriptions thereof unless the zoning administration, the zoning administrator waives the survey requirement for good cause shown. D, all land divisions must comply with the city's land division ordinance or equivalent city of Perry ordinance or code.
Second. We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We're going to switch gears here just a little bit, and I'll ask Kyle to come up, and he can address any questions, perhaps clarify a little bit for you as to why we are talking about this tonight. Back when the committee to possibly merge the city of Perry Police Department with the Village of Morris Police Department met, and that committee met three or four times over the last year and a half, I would say, arriving at a conclusion that it wasn't viable for us to merge our departments. But in that process, we also learned a lot about our mutual aid that has been in agreement for some time, and I'll let Kyle take over.
After we concluded that now was not a good time for the two departments to merge, the subcommittee kept discussing options for the police department and the financing of the police department, and the special assessment discussion ensued. And as we were talking about that, the discussion of maintaining this mutual aid agreement while asking for a special assessment from our citizens to essentially go and cover calls within the Village of Morris, and if that was appropriate on our part. And we, as a, as a committee, subcommittee, concluded that we didn't feel that it was appropriate to ask for a special assessment of our citizens to continue to go over and take calls in the village. So that's where this discussion has kind of led up to this point on, to next agenda. Is that fair and accurate?
I believe it is. Mike, do you have anything to, and Mike's also on that?
No, just that, I mean, it was also discussed what, you know, we would cover over there, our police department would, and if there was an actual, you know, threat to somebody over there, or, you know, there was some sort of major accident or something like that where they needed our help, it wouldn't be that we wouldn't go over there for that. But, you know, you mow three strips into my yard, and I'm mad, and I call the police, Morris can handle that when they get back.
Or the county, or the state police can.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, if it's life, health, and safety, we'll respond just like we would anywhere in the township, another township, anywhere that we have the authority to go upon request. This mutual aid agreement allows us to respond without a request. So once we are requested, we could go to the village or anywhere around and respond for any kind of emergency, just like we would anywhere else. So that would not be negated with this termination.
Good point, good point out, too, so there's no questions about that.
Yep.
And you'll notice in the verbiage that Justin's provided to us if we do pass this resolution, that it would not go into effect for thirty days after this vote is taken to allow both parties to be fully aware that the mutual aid is ended. If there was any doubt about that.
I move that we approve the following resolution to terminate mutual aid with the Village of Morris. The city will give the Village of Morris notice as instructed in the resolution. Whereas the Perry city has considered the existing mutual aid contract with the Village of Morris dated October seventeenth, twenty-fourteen, hereafter the agreement, and whereas the agreement provides the following in relation to terminating the agreement. Eighteen, agreement is expressly understood and agreed that this agreement shall remain in effect until terminated by either the government units upon thirty days, excuse me, effective until terminated by either of the government units upon thirty days prior written notice to the other governmental unit. The effect of such termination shall be the removal of the terminating governmental unit as party to this agreement effective on the effective date of termination. It is hereby determined that the city of Perry shall terminate its agreement with the Village of Morris and directs that written notice of said termination be provided to the Village of Morris forthwith, providing thirty days notice of said termination. Said notice shall identify the effective date of the termination thirty days from the date of the notice.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Chad, we'll give you that one.
It's even easier later.
I've already started my seat. We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Kyle. Shirley's organized our agenda with numbers so that will help me keep track of where we're at. We're on number ten of the agenda, possible first reading of ordinance three eighty-seven. Larry will send that back to you.
Send it back to me.
Yeah.
Since we're repealing this section and won't see it in the verbiage, I'm going to, to read the section that is on the books today before I read the proposal to repeal. Currently, we have a chapter in our codified ordinances titled Trees, Plants, and Shrubs, and ten, twenty-two point oh one reads currently jurisdiction of council. Currently says that councils shall have exclusive jurisdiction, authority, control, and supervision of all trees, plants, and shrubs planted or growing in the city, and the planning, removal, care, maintenance, and protection thereof. This dates back to nineteen fifty-nine.
Why do we want to repeal it?
We do not want cities responsible for every tree within the city. Ordinance committee is recommending that we do not want to be held responsible as a city for all trees, plants, and shrubs on private land within the city of Perry.
Well, then you go on, the next one's all combined, though, so if you repeal that one, how do you then give authority to DPW to trim a tree? We don't have authority to do anything with the tree, so why are you trimming it?
Kevin, do we trim private property trees?
Only if they're overhanging city boundaries or inhibiting us in doing our job in any way. But we don't go onto private property to trim other people's trees. The only time we would intervene like that is if there was a vacant home or property that was foreclosed or whatever, and if there was a dangerous tree and it was a public health issue, then we would seek permission or, or take it as a community to tend to it and make it safe.
And that, basically, what is in the next section?
Right, I, I read it because I wanted to make sure, I knew what I was, and I have it on my phone, I can pull that up. But I don't see what the problem is if we want to be the stewards of the trees and plants. Doesn't say that we're responsible for the trees and plants. We should have, we should have, as a council, complained and stopped them from cutting all these trees down for, for consumers. I didn't realize that the council had that authority until after they did all that.
So I just want to bring up another example. So I, I, my property is adjacent to apartment complexes. I have three trees that were rotting, and there was a conversation had, and, you know, ultimately, they didn't agree to take that down. Ultimately, I paid to have them taken down. But it would have been nice, like Bob was stating, to know that these three trees that have already destroyed my fence once, there's some sort of authority or something that could be brought to someone's attention within the city to say, hey, this is a hazard, we've had someone look at it, is there anything you can do within your power? I guess is what I see as Bob's point.
Yeah, I don't think we should go to, we shouldn't be telling, I know I'm responsible for trees on private property, but if it's in an easement or the right-of-way, if you're not a trained arborist or have been trained to prune trees, and you prune it incorrectly, and that tree then, say, rots in a certain spot, and the tree, the branch falls off and hurts somebody, that can come back and be liable. I know for a fact it's happened in the past. So I think if we're trying to eliminate our liability, I don't think this is the right way to go about it. And I personally, again, I don't think it's a problem that we have a say in what people take down, and we're not doing that now. Maybe we should look at that, you know?
And that's probably what we're doing.
Trees are real important to cooling, and, you know, the cool house, it's all, everything. We live in a city, and the envelope of the asphalt and the concrete and all the roofs of the house heat everything up, trees cool us down. And it appears that our weather is only getting warmer. You can call it whatever you want, I don't care. All I know is the big mature trees. And one reason I bought the house I have is because of the big mature trees I have around the house. And it'll be a sad day that I have, that one has to get cut down, for whatever reason. I'm not saying we should allow dangerous trees, just like when we had the one on the right-of-way of the Queen House. Remember, I went and looked at it, and saw the other trees got cut down. Sometimes you just got to come down. But we shouldn't let people willy-nilly cut trees down.
But I find that interfering in people's right to do their landscaping on their private property. What, what gives us the authority to go to someone's house and say, Jacob, that tree is, is not a good tree for you to have here, it needs to be cut down, we're just going to come in and cut it down?
So I think the argument, and maybe it's a clarification of verbiage, not necessarily just completely getting rid of it, but like, we just had a huge natural disaster come through the town.
Yes, we did.
And in my case, these three trees were basically de-limbed to the point that they were starting to rot. And I did have a certified arborist come in and make a statement, I provided that, and ultimately, we didn't come to an agreement, but I still paid to them to cut down. But it would be nice that if a resident had something similar where a storm de-limbed a tree, they could bring the concern, if it's in between parcels or not in a public right-of-way, they could bring it to council, and we would have the authority to let Kevin know, and it'd be, you know, that there would be more of a, you know.
Again, I don't, I don't think we have the financial wherewithal to give each person who calls and says, this tree's overhanging my garage, the city needs to come and take it down.
That doesn't say anything about that we have to cut the tree down or maintain the tree.
Well, that's, I'm, I'm talking with Jacob.
I'm just telling you.
That's what Jacob just said. Jacob said for the city to come in and remove that tree.
I said to, to, to respond to the complaint, right? So if a certified arborist does that, the city has the authority to say, that tree does need to be taken down, that doesn't mean they have to pay. But I think that there, there is some jurisdiction to having the council or somebody within the city to say that as a public.
But Bob just said that if it's not a certified arborist who's making the decision about trimming or cutting down a tree, that could not be, am I misquoting what you're saying?
In the public, right, in the right-of-way, so if it's a lawn street, and you know the consumers guys come in and hack, they're not certified arborists by any means.
I recognize that, but they have a lot of authority, and that's why we didn't challenge their.
But our ordinance, we could have. I didn't know that we had this, or I would have brought it up.
This wouldn't have overwhelmed.
City Van Arber was successfully stopped there.
And how big is the city of an area?
My point is, we did nothing, we said nothing, so we could have, and this ordinance made it more difficult and at least had a conversation. Perhaps we wouldn't have won, perhaps we wouldn't have convinced them to do otherwise. But they, all they did was put taller poles up, it was over the top of the trees that were there.
There was discussion, just so you know.
I would be very upset if they cut my trees down.
There was a discussion with consumers about the trees that were cut on Polly Street when they put. when they put up those taller poles. There was discussion between the property owner, the then mayor, Jim Hugula, they had discussion with consumers, and there was no willingness to work with the owner, work around the tree, I mean, anything, there was nothing. It was shortly before I became mayor, so I say, I'm in a discussion.
Yeah, I don't know what the discussion was, I wasn't privy to that before I was elected, but it wasn't set yet.
Right, yeah.
But I know I had a conversation with the consumers guy.
Yeah.
And, yes, he was like talking to a brick wall, but he also threatened to cut my tree down too, and I had a very stern conversation with him, and he gave, oh, no, we can do it this way. So there's ways around it.
I.
I just don't, I don't understand why we want to take it out. I mean, it's not saying that we're.
Mostly because of liability, and you mentioned.
You're not eliminating, how are you eliminating it?
By saying that we, the city, is not responsible for control of trees. This came up primarily because on Main Street, down toward Bath Road, probably the third, fourth, maybe, house north of Bath Road, there's a big stump, it doesn't even have a whole tree on it, but it's huge. And a lady was riding her bicycle, and it just so happened that she was out of view of the man backing up in his driveway because she was the other side of that big stump, and he did not see her, and she did not see him because of that big stump. So she was hit by the car, she was injured, and when she was able to be up and around a few months later, she and her husband came in and said, we've talked with the property owner, he says this is your tree, we would like you to take it down. I said, it's not our tree, it's not our responsibility, is what I understand, however, I'll talk with our attorney. So I talked with the attorney, and I'm sure that I reported this to you guys at that time. And he said, no, you're not, but you need to look at that ordinance. That ordinance implies responsibility. So if we were aware of the site issue with that and didn't take it down, we could have been held liable for that accident, the city.
We can be held liable because they pull out here and someone hits them. It doesn't, a good lawyer can get money from a rock. So I don't think you're eliminating, eliminating the ordinance is the wrong avenue. I think you may be changed to wording, because the city's not responsible for the tree. I work in a lot of different municipalities, and believe me, I can't cut down a tree in cities without having to replace that tree, and there's a couple that are very, very particular, so they're not responsible, they have lots of say in what you can and cannot do with these trees.
So what you're saying is the word jurisdiction of council does not mean responsible?
No, we're, all we have is say, you can't, I interpret it, I'm not a attorney, is that we're, we can have say over the tree, not, who's, have you ever pruned the city trees? Does any, do we do that, or is Kevin here? We don't prune city trees as a regular basis. We, you know, I hired, or I'd hire, I found the person for the trees downtown because they needed to be trimmed, pruned. We didn't do that, that was, John was superintendent.
We do tree trimming, cut things back for.
Just for the road.
Roadway and snow pong and stuff like that, but our forestry program is not existing. I think there's five hundred dollars in local and major street for tree maintenance, in which we're going to address it next budget year.
I think we've got to subdivide this discussion, Bob, into, you know, you're talking about what's in public right-of-way or what's on public property. If I took sixty, the one that the ordinance committee's proposing repealing, and I took it literally, and I'm not saying that I would ever do this, but I've got a dead tree in my pine trees right now that's not on public property, not anyplace close to a public right-of-way, that's dead, needs to come down. If I wanted to take this literally, I'd get a hold of Kevin and say, I got a tree that needs to come down because city's responsible for removal of that tree. And I would not ever in my right mind think that the city's responsible, but it says that in that ordinance.
Yeah, the way it's written.
It says public, public place adjacent land or adjacent to a public highway.
No, 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 I'm up on the one above that, I'm reading jurisdiction of council. I'm not proposing under trimming and removal, the ordinance committee is not proposing removal of, deleting that, there's a, and that's why I read it.
We're trying to remove jurisdiction of council.
I'm reading the, the only section that the ordinance committee is proposing repealing in this proposed amendment reads as follows. Council shall have exclusive jurisdiction, authority, control, and supervision of all trees, plants, shrubs planted or growing in the city, and the planning, removal, care, maintenance, and protection thereof. When you go on to the next portion and talk about tree standing in public right-of-way, that's, the ordinance committee's proposing that all of that stay in place.
Okay, but I pulled it up right here, okay? So it says, removed by owner or occupant, not by the city, it says right there.
But what are you reading? I don't know where you're at.
Ten twenty-two point zero-two, trimming and removal.
But that's not what we're reading.
That's what we're proposing repealing.
It says ten twenty-two.
No, ten twenty-two is the chapter under that section.
That one that you held up is ten twenty-two oh-one.
Is what's proposed to be repealed.
Oh-one, that's why I pulled up, okay, let me see, it says, trees planted and growing in the city and planning, removal, care, planning. I don't, I guess you could, a good lawyer could fight that, I don't think so, but why can't we have a say in what people can plant and not plant? Honestly. I mean, I don't want to go crazy, but there is some, I don't want, you want to put a tree that, you know, is invasive or fake or whatever, I mean, why not? I agree, some of those municipalities I work for are nuts, but some of their ideas are good ideas, they have, they want, you want tree diversification, we don't want invasive species, we don't want things that are going to be a nuisance, that are weak, all those things. I don't see, I don't see the problem with that.
I think we're overstepping our authority to tell people what they can and can't plant other than trees that are a problem like box elder trees.
Well, see, we can tell them that we can't plant a box elder, but you can plant a pear. And a pear, the solider, or how do you say it, I can't remember how to say it, pronounce it tonight, that tree is recognized by at least three states as an invasive species. At least, the aisle's the closest one.
What does it do?
Because the birds eat the berries, we always thought it was a sterile berry, they eat the berry and they defecate it out, and it grows another tree over here, and then grows one over here, and that's why.
The box elder trees are prohibited because of the bugs that.
Which we still have anyways, because it's in the maple family, and they go on the maples too, so it's.
So how are we going to enforce this if we stay with that? And I plant a, and it's in my backyard, and I plant a tree that Perry says, no, you can't have it, how are you going to enforce it? Come onto my land, tell me to take it.
I don't know. I know how other places do it.
I just, I think this is going too far.
Well, this is, yes, but we pick and choose what we want to go too far as, right?
I think we, I don't, I don't think that's true, Bob. I, you know, I take offense at that, thank you.
I think as regards the repealing of this, we're going to have to agree to disagree, and I'm going to make a motion, and we can, council can go down how we want to move forward with that, that portion. I move that ordinance amendment number three eighty-seven, chapter ten twenty-two, plants and shrub, trees, plants, and shrubs, section ten twenty-two point oh-one, jurisdiction of council, which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for, excuse me. I'm sorry, the City of Perry ordains Perry City Code, chapter ten twenty-two, trees, plants, and shrubs, section ten twenty-two point oh-one, jurisdiction of council, is hereby repealed. This repeal ordinance is effective thirty days after publication.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mike, and I think we're going to need a roll call. Shirley, would you take a roll call vote on that, please?
Kina Dunn.
Yes.
Mike Connell.
Yes.
Larry Lambert.
Yes.
Doug Porter.
No.
Jacob Puffer.
Yes.
Chad Fuller.
Yes.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Hold on just a minute. Roll call vote's been completed, the motion passes. Go ahead.
So I agree that, you know, some of the verbiage, but I can put it on the agenda. The only thing that I would like, or maybe offer up for discussion is, there should be somebody that, you know, if something is a hazard to my building on my property and an owner adjacent to my property is neglectful, I still think there should be somebody that, whether it's DPW because it's a public hazard, or a private hazard for my kids in my backyard, you know, stuff like that, I think someone needs the authority or jurisdiction to try to enforce the removal of a hazard.
Let me just address that a little bit with you in regard to my own house.
Okay.
The people who live behind us, who had a tree that was to the west of our garage, that it was dying in the middle, it was a box elder tree, dying in the middle, lots of dead branches up in the middle, and we were very concerned that was going to fall on our garage. So we had discussion, they indicated we can't afford to have that tree cut down. So no, we're not going to cut it down. So my husband and I talked about it and said, well, we're concerned it's going to fall on the garage, so if we pay to have it cut down, are you okay with that? Yes, we are. So we had it cut down, now the wood lays in his backyard because he said he wanted it, so that's his, but anyway. So, I mean, that's a way that that can be handled, and there is. Any attorney would tell you this, because I've had these discussions as well and other related matters, where there's a branch or a tree that's leaning over the neighbor's shed or something like that, you have the right, if it's leaning over your property, you have the right to cut that branch.
In my case, none of them were, but they were cut down today, and they were clear today to rot it on the inside and out, and, you know, I just spent money to replace my fence, you know, so those things, you know, I put a fence up.
And the neighbors either couldn't afford or would not.
In this case, I mean, they own an apartment complex, so they definitely could, but chose not to. So things like that, I think, you know, are worth discussing.
But they were willing to let you take it down.
Yes. But.
Again, I, there's, there's things that should be discussed and decided between neighbors, I think, maybe I'm wrong.
I agree, and I tried to have that discussion.
I don't think the city is who should step in and say, I mean, we don't have arborists on duty.
No, it should fall under code enforcement a little bit too, if something dangerous or unsafe, I don't know if they have a nuisance ordinance or how we deal with that here in the City of Perry, but typically there's something like that built in that would fall under the scope of ordinance enforcement, or even building if it's a dangerous building, the building department would take a look at it and go through their process, red tag it or seek a court order to have it demolished or what have you.
And maybe that's the, what I'm saying would be not, I didn't know if that was in there or not, you know, this is the first time hearing about something like this.
Well, we do have the first reading of ordinance number three eighty-eight that does include information about trimming and removal, perhaps that will answer some of our questions.
Yeah, we'll attempt to remove on with that. Largely, what's going to be read next involves what's on the books currently, there's only a couple minor changes, but we'll read, you know, read the whole activity. Basically, it says, in place of today, where council appears, in the future, you'll see, as we read this, City of Perry Department of Public Works in a couple of places, and we will later on involve the ordinance enforcement officer, which did not exist at the time that this ordinance was put in place a number of years back. I move that ordinance amendment number three eighty-eight, chapter ten twenty-two, trees, plants, and shrubs, section ten twenty-two point oh-two, trimming and removal, and section ten twenty-two point oh-three, attachments, injury, and section ten twenty-two point oh-five, box elder trees D, which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The City of Perry ordains Perry City Code, section ten twenty-two, trees, plants, and shrubs, section ten twenty-two point oh-two, trimming and removal, section ten twenty-two point oh-three, attachments, injury section, excuse me, injury, section ten twenty-two point oh-five, box elder trees point D, are hereby amended and the following is substituted in their place instead. Ten twenty-two point oh-two, trimming and removal, tree standing in and upon any public highway or public place and on any lot or land adjacent to any public highway or public place, and having branches projecting into the public highway or public place, or endangering public safety or property, shall be kept trimmed and removed by owner or occupant of the property, on or in front of which such trees are growing. If the owner or occupant neglects or refuses to trim such trees on being notified in writing to do so, City of Perry Department of Public Works may do the necessary work, and a cause shall be assessed against the property owner. Ten twenty-two point oh-three, attachments, injury. No person shall attach any rope, wire, cable, sign, card, poster, or other article, or do any damage to a tree that or its guard in a public highway without first obtaining a written permit thereof, or therefore from the City of Perry Department of Public Works. No person shall pour or deposit salt, brine, or other injurious material upon any public highway in such a manner as to injure any shrub planted or growing thereon. Ten twenty-two point oh-five, box elder trees point D. Any inspection of the tree the superintendent may require by written notice addressed either to the owner or of the premises on which the tree is located, or the occupant of such premises in the removal of such tree. Such notice shall be given, the person so notified, as a definite time in which to comply with such notice, which time shall be at least fifteen days following the date of such notice. If the tree is not removed within time given in the notice, the superintendent shall report the failure to remove such tree to the ordinance enforcement officer. All provisions of such ordinance not inconsistent with the above amendments remain in full force and effect.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, but I would ask, is there any discussion regarding this? Does that clarify some of your questions that you had?
I think it helps what my case was, I guess, the only thing, again, is that it doesn't include, you know, adjacent properties. You know, I still find where my son plays a hazardous area, it may not be public and what have you, but if a tree's dying and it's already damaged my property once, and it still hasn't been taken down, you know, who's to say it doesn't fall and injure my kid or my dog?
So it hangs over or leans over your property?
It did, they've been taken down.
Yeah, and you have the right to do that, if, if, anyway.
I guess this, the way I understand this is it doesn't explicitly say I had that right anymore after the jurisdiction.
I think you'd have to get that from an attorney, you'd have to say to the attorney, do I have the right to do this? But I just wondered if this helped to address that for you. So we have a motion on the floor, made by Larry, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay.
Nay. I just have an issue with the council for changing the City of Perry Public Works from council, that's all. That one's it to me.
Shirley, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Mike Connell.
Yes.
Larry Lambert.
Yes.
Doug Porter.
No.
Jacob Puffer.
No.
Chad Fuller.
Yes.
Kina Dunn.
Yes.
So we have four ayes, two nays, motion passes. So that was number eleven on our agenda.
Yes.
Now we have number twelve.
Okay, continuing on. Once again, we have one proposed that would be repealed. And this deals with chapter ten twenty, driveways and sidewalks, specifically ten twenty two point oh two, excuse me, annual inspection of public sidewalks. And it currently reads, the superintendent of public works or his or her agent shall at least annually inspect all public sidewalks throughout the city to determine whether, A, any new public sidewalk shall be constructed along any street and B, any existing public sidewalks need to be repaired or reconstructed. The city superintendent shall thereafter report the results of such inspection to council for further action as council deems appropriate. We had a lot of discussion with the ordinance committee as well as input from Justin English, our city attorney, and we are bringing forth the recommendation that that section be in fact repealed.
What is, isn't it a good idea to have inspection and then so we know how to plan for future sidewalks and repairs?
It would become a part of the DPW's routine activities, just like they do maintaining other services within the city, but would not be on the books as an out and out annual requirement to be done. The concern becomes if we find something and doesn't get repaired quickly or immediately, the risk of greater liability than the city would otherwise have comes into play.
So it doesn't remove our liability, just reduces, it may, may, doesn't necessarily...
Exactly. If you look at the state level requirement, the state level basically says if we have a disconnect between sections of sidewalk greater than two inches, they deem that it would be a safety hazard. But it's very unclear and not very definitive in terms of what other areas would have to be taken into account. So the idea being a recommendation would be that Kevin, the DPW, with a normal course of driving around, which they do today, would be reviewing and as required, certainly addressing disconnects of greater, similarity greater than two inches, section to section, or major issues would get addressed. But it would not necessarily be an annual on the books, have to be done by X date.
We're trying to make it on going. We're not in violation of our own ordinances, because it's in the books as we have to. We're trying to make it a regular, routine practice.
Yeah, I've been on council three years, I haven't seen that report ever, so.
I know John has done one.
That I know of anyways.
I know John has done it before and I haven't. And not a whole lot changes from year to year, so if you do an inspection this year and turn around and go through and do it next year, it's going to be very similar. So, and people usually, if they have an issue with something, they let us know and then we can address it. You know, they're usually pretty quick to let us know if there's an issue. And obvious issues like the tornado, I mean, we knew what happened there, so we worked to resolve it as quickly as we could, you know, within reason, so.
And hopefully that's an anomaly.
Yes.
Certainly a one-off, so. Again, I just don't see the, I understand your point, I really do, I get it. I don't know, this one's a little easier to swallow, but I just don't see why we shouldn't have something, a policy that instead we don't have an ordinance, have a policy that, you know, because it's, I, they get busy and things happen, I get it. You know, so we have some sort of, something that's going on every year that, because again, I don't, maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I don't remember seeing one. I'm sure they did it at some point, but we've never seen it as council, three years I've been on council.
It's part of it, Bob, it's not, has not been the ongoing practice and that's why we raised the question as ordinance committee. And we get a two-page memo back from Justin English in terms of, but the risks and liabilities of having it versus not having it, and the idea of, as even before, the idea of having it as a routine part of business. We don't have an ordinance that says they're going to, you know, check water lines constantly or sewer lines.
Correct.
They're doing all of that.
They have an internal policy that would do that.
Exactly, so they would have an internal business practice that would treat sidewalks just like any other service that the city has.
That was a reasonable explanation, I get it, I just...
Okay, the other portion of what is being repealed, would be repealed if we approve this, is ten twenty point ninety-nine penalty, and it talks about referring to our general enforcement activity. The reality, this could have been or should have been repealed back at the time that we took other criteria out of this section of the ordinance and moved it to the zoning ordinance. So basically, this just says there is no remaining ordinance to have a penalty against. And all of the specific criteria as regards sidewalk construction and things now resides in the zoning ordinance and as the applicable enforcement criteria there. The city of Perry ordains Perry City Code, chapter ten twenty, driveways and sidewalks, section ten twenty point oh two, annual inspection of public sidewalks, and section ten twenty point ninety-nine penalty are hereby repealed. This repeal ordinance is effective thirty days after publication. Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of your motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Well, thank you, Larry, and thank you to your committee, the ordinance committee, for all that hard work. And Justin, even though he's not here, we'll thank him for getting them all reviewed and... Are you pretty much caught up now, or do you have some more?
Yes, more, but I just came to Shirley last week dealing with a couple of other issues. One, dealing with a little bit more definition around, potentially around driveways in the city as well as some clarification of accessory buildings and shed requirements.
Oh, yes, okay.
Those are in the hopper in route to Justin, and Shirley has the opportunity.
Okay, so moving on in our agenda to number thirteen, possible approval of annual employee Christmas dinner. Shirley's going to tell us what she has found out in regard to that.
Right, so the past couple of years, we were at Glenbrier, which was a lot of fun. But when I, I called them many times over the past couple of weeks to confirm our date, just to make sure, even though I knew they had put it on the schedule. They emailed back and said, "Due to some unforeseen circumstances, we cannot have your dinner." So I called Charlie's. And he is excited to have us come to possibly his new part of his building to have our dinner. So that's just kind of the deal, we won't know until, I guess, it gets closer if he can host it in the new portion or not, because the state has to come and inspect and extend his liquor license, he doesn't have to get a new one, he just has to have it like extended to that building or something, so.
Otherwise, we could heat one part and drain the other.
Right, so that's the deal. He, we have decided on, they'll all be plated, everything will be plated, so we'll just order our dinner. We're going to have a choice from prime rib or big chicken. So it'll be whatever comes with that, and if you guys approve it, then we will send out the invitations that I printed today and get going, so. Any questions? I don't have a price per plate, but he did guarantee me that it would not exceed, it would be under our budget or at our budget of a thousand dollars.
Is this a budget item that we do yearly?
So it is money that we, the money comes from rentals that we have in the, like, that's where we get our money for that, it's not, how do I want to say it?
It's not out of the general fund?
Out of the general fund, right, yes, yep, yep.
It's from the rentals of the building.
In the rentals of the building.
And for the sake of our new people, tell them who all gets invited to this.
So council, any official council members, planning commission.
Retired employees?
Retired employees, yeah, retired employees. Who else? I, there's a list of, we have like fifty invitations, I think I sent out or whatever.
And their spouses.
And their spouses, and one, all the city staff, so.
I think last year we had forty people, more or less.
Well, I move that we approve an annual employee appreciation Christmas dinner to be hosted at Charlie's Bar and Grill on Friday, December first, two thousand twenty-three. Price for the dinner not to exceed a thousand dollars. We authorize the city clerk to make the necessary arrangements.
Second.
We have a motion from Kina, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Number fourteen on our agenda is possible resolution regarding public act four seventy-seven. This is something that we have talked about every year. If you're new to the council, though, you may not be super familiar with it. It is, there's a copy, I think everybody has that copy in your packet. We'll give you a few minutes to look that over and see if you have any questions. So this is basically an opt-out option where the city can determine on its own how much it contributes to employee health insurance without reference to the hard caps or the eighty-twenty plan in the act, as long as we have a two-thirds vote required to extend the exemption. And we have voted to do this every year since it went into effect, so.
It was late in October, the beginning of October, and I just stumbled across this, so I apologize. It's late, I didn't, so.
I move that we accept it about the following resolution. Whereas the publicly funded health insurance contribution act, also known as Senate Bill number seven, was passed by Michigan Legislature and signed by Governor Snyder on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven. And whereas although the law imposes a maximum, the public employers may contribute to an employee healthcare cost, it also provides a mechanism for cities and other local units of government to opt out of the act's requirements for one year, one-year period by a two-thirds vote of city council allowing the city to determine on its own how much contributions to employee health insurance without reference to hard caps or the eighty-twenty plan in the act. A new two-thirds vote would be required to extend the exemption in each subsequent year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Perry council shall opt out of the requirements of the publicly funded health insurance contribution act, also known as Senate Bill number seven. All resolutions and parts of resolutions in so far as conflict with the provisions in the resolution be and they hereby are rescinded.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. That brings us to the end of our agenda. But we have opportunity for any other business that may come before council to come at this time. Any council discussions and observations? Any public comment that needs to come before us?
Can I ask a question?
You may.
The food bank needs plastic sacks and as I'm sitting here, Facebook is so great. Do you, is it okay if I put a couple of large cardboard boxes out there and post on Facebook, "Drop off your sacks until four o'clock and thank you," and then at four o'clock I bring them in and that's that? Or do you think people would keep on dropping off sacks and it turns into a trash pile?
You have to just test it, I think.
I think we just have to test it.
If it's a disaster, never again. Because what happened last week also with the little pantry, I came in and like someone had left stuff, like a baby gate. I was like...
Oh, no.
I got rid of it right quick, but what do you think?
Would it help if you put the boxes in the entryway upstairs and just instructed people to bring them into city hall?
That's what I would do. Your next area becomes...
Well, at least we can keep an eye on it.
Yeah, we'll keep it clean and then they can't come after four o'clock.
Right, oh yeah, because you lock the doors.
Yeah.
Or just in case if it rains or...
Or if it rains, then you don't have to worry about putting it in and out. It's kind of like the pill drop off thing, we, yeah.
I would rather do that than trouble Carl's or Sal's with it.
No, I think that's why. We have a thing where people can drop off glasses, eyeglasses.
Oh, yeah.
We have that, we have the pill drop off thing.
I could leave a bucket there maybe all the time, nice and neat, for plastic sacks.
And when I get sick, I can just bring them down to you.
All right, thanks.
I'll dump them on your floor.
No, I'm kidding. We're all manly.
I can just, just go like this.
Thank you, Hazel.
You're welcome, thank you. Just so all of you know, Genevieve Cottrell resigned as president of the food bank. And they have two officers now left who will be meeting with the food bank people and they'll be voting for a new president. Any other discussion? We had something that needs to go on the agenda for next time, I think the brush pile, so let's make sure that's on there.
And the sidewalks down bathroom?
Oh, yes.
And the sidewalks down bathroom, discussion on that.
I have sidewalks on BF road, the generator, where will the funds go for the truck after it's sold? The tree replacement, the ordinances, and...
All right, then barring any further discussion, anybody, anybody, anybody? Nine oh seven, we are adjourned.